So, take one of these and pass it down. Take one of these, pass it down. Now, the first tab.
So, I take this one right here?
No, no, no.
Wait for instructions.
I was very proud of those.
The teachers, the teachers give me instructions.
So, if you take the binder clip off, there are three sets of paperclip papers together. The first set of paperclip papers replaces everything behind the yellow tab.
Do we get crayons?
Oh, you don't have tabs? I made yours before we did this, I'm so sorry.
She was getting special, special treatment.
Of course she is. Here, we got, we got you fixed. I got, I.
They had a member going out.
Perfect.
There you go.
I heard that.
That's got tabs.
So, we take right. So, there we go. It replaces everything behind.
I just added some stuff to it.
Between the yellow and the red.
The first, behind the yellow tab, everything comes out.
Yep. Go ahead. Larry, do you know your, uh?
That's a tab. And then the first one there.
I have, I know eight of them.
Okay.
Did it stop on them? Sure. What, when we did the first time, it was really early.
Okay, so I got the yellow tab.
Okay, but everybody's caught up. The second set of papers goes behind the red tab.
Do you want to keep these two in there?
Uh, you can take them out, because it's just replacing the information that's there.
Very good job.
And then the last bit of information goes behind the pink tab. So, you can get to the pink tab and take everything out and put the last set of papers behind the pink tab.
Very impressive, thank you, Senator.
This is your story right here.
Yes.
Counsel can follow directions.
Follow directions.
Not only the first part.
It's for the friends.
Those, that's for the recycling. So, what, what we've done is we've gone back. The, the new information that you got, there does include the part-time and temporary positions that we had not yet included. And that, that made a significant budget change. We've also gone back and reevaluated a couple of different things. And so, with the general fund right now, there's about a $399,000 surplus. Now, let me tell you that the paperwork that you have right now, if you did the math, would show a $299,000 surplus. After Jessica began printing, and she had some very choice words for me because that copy machine jammed twice on her. After she began printing, we found another 100K that was an easy, an easy removal. Somebody way overestimated the service. And I called them and they said, "No, I don't need that." And so, we took out another 100K. So, right now, the general fund has a $399,000 surplus. Now, this, this includes the, uh, you said the position. Those positions that folks said was critical, that they had to have and include them? It does not include those. It does include all of the part-time positions that were, um, am I correct?
That's right.
Uh, it does include all of the part-time positions that were not originally, part-time and temporary positions that were not originally included in the, uh, the paperwork.
You had a discussion.
The other day. Those are about 500,000. About, so what, I'm sorry?
Definition of critical.
Okay, so, so.
A one, a one isn't necessarily critical.
Okay. What sticks out to me is, is the lady down at the fire ground, since she had to have somebody down there because they were doing all this overtime and stuff. That does not include that, that position or whatever she was talking about, correct?
Correct, it is not.
Because they will not, she wasn't taking it back once, they're not taking down rogers anymore. It takes two, three days, and when we get the roger in this year, we'll button press for the rogers in. So, it doesn't take, the full crew that has been to put in the rogers.
Does that get you okay? Does it get you okay?
Uh, yeah, I'm writing it down. So, that was about 500,000 dollars in increase for the part-time.
Well, the part-time and temporary employees ended up being about two, 1.8, 2 point? So, yes, it was about 1.8 or so million by the time we got those in there. But we did go back and look at our business tax growth, which we had underestimated. Because I had basically left it flat. And after the conversation that we had, we figured about 1.2% should be fair for that. And so, we went back and readjusted that, and then we consulted with departments and said, "Okay, some of this is optimistic. What, what things can you pare back, given the fact that, you know, we're trying to accomplish several different things?" And so, several of our departments went back. Fire department, it's going to reallocate some resources and should be able to drastically reduce their overtime, for example. And there've been several, several groups made some significant contributions. I, for example, gave up my thousand dollars for the furniture for the revenue department.
He sacrifices.
Yeah.
What a man.
Well, there just wasn't, there wasn't a lot.
If you had been taller, you could have gotten some of that left over.
Well, no, the, the revenue ladies sit on those tall chairs and those things tend to wear out faster than a, than a normal chair would. We can still probably come up with some chair money for them. But, uh, you know, you look at a lot of your operating departments, especially in this building, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of overhead. There's not a lot of, it costs what it costs. But some of our, some of our departments that are more in the community were able to look at the way that they perform certain tasks and make some adjustments there. And, and I think, well, I was grateful that they went back and did that, so.
Let me ask you this, going back to those, uh, personnel person down to the background or whatever. Based upon what discussion has been made after our meeting about that, then the council should not receive any budget amendments for filling a position down there at the fire ground. You know, assuming, of course, no one quits or something like that. You should not get a budget amendment saying, "I need to have somebody down here because of, uh, because we need him so bad." That should not come up.
Should not come up. That should not come up. I mean, that's a decision you guys.
I know, no, but I'm saying they shouldn't, they shouldn't come to us and say, "We need somebody down here because discussions have taken place now to take care of that."
I, I mean, I would tend to agree with you, yes, sir.
No, I'm asking, is that, is my assessment correct?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's what we did for two days. And they, they gave it to you first, they came to us.
Those, the discussions that were presented about the additional employees were not, they were not presented to HR meeting first. They were just brought up at the meeting, we went back and had a conversation about what critical he is, okay?
May I go back to the fire department then? Because, and again, I was kind of in a bad situation listening, but I thought I heard him say that he did need someone. And then I'm hopeful that down the road, that those firemen that we're not really having a placeholder for, but that we will be able to fill those spots.
So, there, there are vacancies.
So, it won't be that same kind of question that it would be.
But we, we have, we have four vacancies right now in the fire department that we are funded. With natural attrition, with turnover, it doesn't make financial sense to budget for 18 vacant positions. We have five vacant positions in the police department that are funded. They need 14, I think, and it doesn't make sense to budget for 14. If we get a huge wave of hires in for those firefighters and those police officers, then yeah, we'll, we'll come back with a budget number for that. But it's to hold open 18 and 14 positions, when historically, we don't hire them many in a year.
I just was following up the same thought process that he was having, that if they do have three or four, I want to be clear that we're okay to do that. But he did say that he needed either an assistant. Did you all go back to discuss that?
They're, they're doing some reorganization. The person that they have now is retiring, and so, they wanted to bring her back part-time and then hire an additional person. They did, they had worked that out with the reorganization.
So, has there, have there been discussions, going back to a conversation we had about fire trucks going on every call?
Yes, that's, in part of the bond issue, that's, there's vehicles in that for those, we don't have enough vehicles now, right now, to do that, so.
But my question was going, have we had a conversation with EMS about them being better funded to kind of relieve the fire department's burden there?
I think, well, I think their service area is so big. And so, we're just, and we're in a better position just about how we structure our fire department to respond to that. And it's, you know, we're in the, we can either ask them to do it, wait on them to do it, or we can make sure that we're going to save lives and, and respond to the vehicles that they have. That we're going to get smaller vehicles, not a safe amount of cost.
I'm sure we're going to get the smaller vehicles to address that.
The greater cost of the personnel.
So, we're not increasing, we're not increasing personnel, we're just, we're, we do have some, but 10 and nine, maybe, single role paramedics. But majority of our firefighters across training and that. And that was, so, when I first ran in 19, that was the plea from our fire department was that there was no cooperative agreement with EMS. And so, we had some firefighters that, in their other job, they were paramedics. But because they weren't allowed to do that role, they were just, you know, give a Band-Aid and a warm blanket, right? Um, and this, I knew it, I knew what to do, but I could not do it. Because I was, I always had a uniform of a firefighter. And so, we got that to where, we're going to get to the scene before anybody else is going to get there. And so, it makes sense for us to be able to provide that life-saving measure, not to just make someone comfortable and also help them out when, until the ambulance gets there.
I have another question. I had in my notes here that when the city court came by, they were talking about some money for a magistrate. That's not in here, is it?
No, sir.
Huh?
No.
Okay. And, um, I made a note, and I've forgotten exactly what this is. I made a note that says 1.4 million needed to be included in the budget.
That's for the part-time departments.
Oh, that's what we just talked about.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm back to the, to the paramedics or the fire department. Is there a way, if our, if our fire department EMS people, whatever we call them, are there to assist? Is there a way that we can build the insurance company just like the EMS would or West Texas Healthcare would?
I think, I'm, I'm talking out of my league here. I think the billing comes from the transport. And so, first responders, first responder, you provide life-saving measures on scene, then that's part of the effort. I mean, it's, at some level, our police officers do that too. We don't build insurance for, for saving a life. I, I think that it, that the insurance done comes from the transport, and we're not going to get in the transport business. You realize you're breaking for that.
All right.
Thank you, Zepa Don.
Anything else you got to pull out?
We're going to work with the rest of the tabs, which, questions you had, they're all ready.
There are, I mean, there's, there are, there were some minor changes to some benefit information in HNS or in solid waste. And we made a couple of small revenue adjustments there based on the most recent HNS billing. But this didn't work, I mean, you're talking.
That's in your red tab.
That's in your red tab. You're talking 20, 20K, 30K in, in revenue. And then, behind the pink tab, there were several adjustments made. And I will tell you, there's a new sheet that was not in your original set of sheets. First thing you should see is a revenue sheet for capital fund. And then, the next three pages, four pages, five pages, there's lots of zeros. Six pages, seven pages is a summary of the information that's on the detail for the capital. Just so if you wanted to, didn't want to figure out how much is in police capital, how much is in this? That information is on pages one through seven in there. But there were several different capital adjustments as well. No new capital.
Give me an example of an adjustment that was made, not detailed, just.
Uh, the police department, as opposed to giving 25 or something, have now said they'll be happy with 10 or 15.
Those adjusted down?
Yes, sir.
All the adjustments that made, they were adjusted down?
They were all adjusted down, yes, sir.
So, what is, what is the bottom line, what is our, how far off, how far under, how far forward are we?
Well, you've got the $399,000 surplus in general fund. You've got, um, about a, with the way the capital is sitting right now. You've got sort of three and a, three and a half million dollar deficit in, um, in the capital fund. And you've got about a $2.8 million surplus in debt service. But we're going to spend that debt service, very likely, about $2.8 million on financing the debt.
So, really, that's a lot.
You've got to come up, I mean, the thing is to fund the capital items that you've got right now, you're going to come up with three, three and a half million. Three and a half million dollars.
That, that the deficit, you think?
In the capital, in the capital fund.
So, last year, our capital fund was about 8.2 million?
About 6.2 million.
Okay, I got a revised budget, 8.2 for the capital outline.
Yeah, the revised, uh, the revised budget right now is 7.145 for capital outline.
We're dropping that down to?
Uh, it's 5.395 right now.
What you do is extra $3 million.
I'm sorry, sir?
Pretty, we've got $3 million, we had a capital.
Transfer from the general fund over for the, the homeless shelter. Just 2.82.
The council can't allow us.
The budget they made, we're saying we're going to be right now at 6 million. And then this budget coming up, we're doing less than 2 million. Is that right?
The budget that you've got before you has got 5.395 million in capital. You adopted a budget last year with 6.2 million in capital. Right now, you're at 7.1 because you've done some capital purchases that you.
What page is that? If you're on the.
What page is that, ma'am?
I'm, um, I'm on page, just for the easy, for ease of use. I'm on, under the, under the pink tab, I'm on page seven.
Okay.
It could be yours. No, I mean, it's.
Larry's, Larry's started to spread.
I didn't say anything for you.
The more diamonds.
I'm fancy of being back.
The person was behind, was it? I can walk you through what you need to replace in your tabs if you'd like.
Let me, you guys know that.
Page, hand that to Ryan, he'll take care of it.
Okay.
5.1 million, I'm sorry, on page seven. On page seven, uh, the current 2025 revised budget is 7.14 million dollars. So, the middle of the column, the top of the column, it says 7.14. That, the budget that is before you to consider is the column that's called 2026 workshops. That's because that's where we are right now. And that one shows 5.395 million dollars. So.
So, we're going with the revised?
No, the budget that you're talking about is the last column, 2026 workshops.
Okay, so the 50, we'll say 5.4.
Yeah, 5.4, yes, ma'am.
That's what we're going with?
Well, I mean, that's up to y'all.
But, but we're still, for this, we're still three and a half million short?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so go to our fund balance. How are we there?
We're still working, obviously, on a couple of these things, but we estimate the fund balance at the end of our year, this fiscal year, at about 20.5 million dollars.
Okay, so that's about 5 million over where you kind of say we have to be, is that correct?
How much again?
20.5.
So, can we not look at that extra and hopefully use that for, how much do you?
I am, I am incredibly cheap, okay? And I'm also incredibly cautious.
Right.
And if you guys hit your fund balance for $3 million or $5 million every year, you're not going to have the fund balance very well.
Right, you told us that last year.
Where were we this time last year, do you remember?
When you budgeted, this time last year, you budgeted a fund balance at about 21.5. Your fund balance last year at the end of fiscal year 23 was about 26 million dollars.
Okay, so, basically, we either look at the fund balance or we have cut 3.5 million. Am I correct on that?
Or just whatever.
Okay. Are we optimistic on the revenue amount, or are we shooting lower like we normally do?
We are shooting lower, and I, and you were on the, you were on the road again last week when we talked about this. But, but Ryan and I consulted with Dr. Larry Kessler with the University of Tennessee Boyd Center for Economic Studies and whatever else they did. And they're looking at a, at a flat projection for the state. Actually, they said they can't really predict what's going on right now, but if they were going to tell us something.
220 million less revenue for April than was, uh, no, sorry, 179 million, I think, less revenue for the state in April than was budgeted.
But we, but he said, I mean, we figured, so a good rule of thumb on average is to, is to figure 3% revenue growth in sales and business tax. That's a good rule of thumb. We figured 1.2% growth this year because of where we are in relation to Blue Oval. And just based on even in the past, when you've had difficult economic times, Jackson's outperformed, has outperformed everybody in the region, just because, well, you are the hub city. But, um, that's, that's where.
And you said we did 1.2, is that correct? And they're saying maybe 3.3.
No, no, no.
They're saying, historically, they do 3. This year, they're actually saying flat.
Okay.
And we still did 1.2, but because of our.
Because where we are on the low.
In our conversation with Andy, felt like that, but he said modest growth, and it's like, what do you mean by that? And he says 1 or 2%, and I'm like, okay, how about 1.2%?
All right, so that's calculated.
That's in here, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Before you go further, I need you to go back and help me with the 3.5 million deficit in capital. How do we arrive at that figure with that amount, that, that's the amount of deficit?
So, if you look up the end of page seven.
All right.
It shows, uh, the proposed budget of 5.395, and I didn't bring a calculator.
Yeah, that's under, under workshop.
Under the workshop.
Yeah.
And you subtract that from the number at the bottom of page one.
Under, under workshop?
Yes, sir.
1.6.
Yeah. You're going to bet 3.75, I'm sorry, I was using.
I was on page one, this is the amount of, this is revenues.
Yes, sir, that's revenue.
Okay. And this 5 is, is expense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you.
Nathan, do we have what we're asking for? We have a one-page listing of how much revenue came in through general fund, how much revenue is coming in towards, um, the bond issue, whatever. And how much revenue is coming in because of grants? So, we've got to say overall, how much revenue is coming in and where it's coming from?
Well, the, the bond issue is in anything that you've got here.
Because if we don't have bond issue, what, do we have grants in here separate from what we can tell how much?
It's not broken up quite that way. We do have it broken up by org or by, uh, the source agency, if, if you've got it, and those are on pages one through whatever, um.
Yeah, okay, I'll just, I'll just.
On yellow tab. Now, I will tell you, Councilor Lawrence, that we've been working on these payroll and benefits projections to get those correct. That's been the focus of our, of our work the last, the last, well, since I saw you last. And so, uh, I, I, we will eventually have that information, but we don't have it today.
I would love to see it, because to me, that's one of the checks, look at a history and see how much revenue is coming in every year, not just by, in different funds, but total revenue. And it's extremely important to me to see how much is coming in for grants. And right now, it looks like we're kind of doing the cart from the horse. We're talking about individual things before we look, you get, here's, here's our revenue coming in. Now, all the revenue here, now break it down, do a fund, break it down, do debt service, break it down, whatever.
I'm thinking that you're giving us the incomes, the income sources, which, you're saying some of those projections are down.
I'm thinking that you're giving us the incomes, the income sources, which you're saying some of those projections are down.
Oh, yes, well, they're, they're down or they are not up as much as they should be.
I think he is giving them to us, it just.
No, he's not, I want one page, it shows the revenue instead of me having to go add five pages together.
Balance sheet.
Yeah, it's just simple, simple accounting.
Can we have a, is there a, like, we have a one-page balance sheet.
Absolutely.
Our balance sheet is about eight pages, and the balance sheet shows fund balances and liabilities. And so what you're looking for is a summary revenue sheet. And, I mean, our system does not print one automatically, and we'll, we'll get you one together, Councilman Lawrence.
Thank you.
I think something that will help in the future is what we talked about last year, is to go back. And so during council meetings or Thursday night sessions, we talked about, here's the grant we're already in, here's how far that we are with it. So hopefully we get through all of this, then we can go back and think that will be helpful to bring everybody to the same page.
Most of these, most of your grants are restricted to a certain purpose, and so it's, sometimes it's difficult to say just because you've got a three-quarter million dollar grant. I mean, it's got to be used for this particular thing.
This, this.
So it's not like it's general revenue.
Rough notice, got a nice six million dollar budget, how much of that's funded by grants?
Hmm, one, maybe, maybe a million dollars, maybe a million and a half.
Well, so that's, that's a good number to, to have. Well, I do get that, I appreciate it.
The three and a half.
Those are restricted to.
Yeah, they're all restricted to every, every single one.
Red line item from.
Right, and, and you can, if you look on page, just, just to give you a little reference, um, if you look on page, um, looking for some police stuff, that, that shows up, a couple of those police grants need to be categorized, but, um, like, if you look, um, on page four, for example, you'll see, uh, under police admin, uh, you'll see donations, uh, state law enforcement, evidence awards, sex offender registry, uh, West City healthcare, revenue, police, uh, police grants.
Yellow.
Yellow tab, I'm sorry, I mean, those are, those are either grants or reimbursables. And, uh, of course, those are restricted in a way that they can be used. And that, and that's, that's kind of the way that this is broken out, because it's broken out by, it's broken out by the department to which it applies, for lack of a better term.
Okay, let's go back to our, go back to our three point five, we're, we're short three point five, so we gotta figure out where we're getting that. And I'm gonna always throw in, I want infrastructure money, so I don't have any infrastructure money, so what are we, what are we gonna do?
Zero of that, correct?
Yes, in the cap, we have, we do have the half a million in operating for asphalt or, or any house crews, and so, um, yeah, we haven't, we haven't put that in there yet because, one, I was letting him do all the payroll stuff, I don't know how to add that in there, so. Add the street resourcing cap, I don't know how to add the items in there, so I was waiting, you need no payroll before we talk.
The street resourcing is.
We only, we have half a million in operating.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
So the animal care is gonna pay me half that since this, but.
And, and just as you were thinking, we're hopefully from the, um, homeless shelter, we're gonna have maybe that six hundred thousand possibly.
We have a, we have a five point two million dollar, uh, contract renewal all July-ish, whenever we get the bond for street resourcing.
So I, I, I just wanna go back, let's, three point five, let's figure out what are we, what are we doing? If we can't go into fund balance.
I'm not saying you can't, it's just you gotta.
So if we went into fund balance this year, and, and I would like to propose that we put a committee together that will help us forecast, led by Nathan, but I'm getting ahead of myself. But if we're gonna have to fund this, we're gonna have to fund it. So fund balance, I would say, is the only place unless we start cussing.
What is your suggestion about how we handle three point five million?
I mean, one of the questions that we talked about are, what are some service-based revenue sources that we've got sitting around in the city? And.
What do you, so you guys explain that, service-based, what?
Well, I mean, so, you know, the question I asked, uh, for example, and, and we, Ron has been working on this. Uh, do building and planning and engineering approval fees cover the actual cost to actually administer the service? Do, do those fees, do they cover those? Um, I, I don't think that it's going to be a big number, um, but those kind of fees that we charge right now for development fees generate about one point three million dollars right now. Now, you know, a modest increase will, in, a modest adjustment to actually cover the cost of the service that we're providing would generate a modest amount of money. You know, you look at rental facilities for different fees, do the fees for which we rent these facilities cover the cost of renting them, basically? Uh, the rental facilities for like the ned, the Carnegie, the, uh, fairgrounds generate about six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. You know, does, does that enough to cover what we're spending on those things?
Can I ask you right there, Nathan, let's start, so that first one would possibly generate two hundred thousand?
We're figuring one, but.
One, one hundred, okay, so let's say one hundred thousand.
But did you realize?
And that one hundred thousand is for fees.
Yeah, like, like if you, like.
Building permits.
Building permits and plans are viewed.
And I would say, absolutely, if we're not covering our cost on that, it needs to be raised. So that's a modest, let's just say one hundred thousand, then the next one going up on Civic Center, Fairgrounds, the ned.
Right, and I don't know if the costs, I don't know if the fees cover the cost, I don't know. But, I mean, I, I know that some of these rent fairly inexpensively.
Okay, that's a really good point right there, too. If it's not covering it, we gotta take a look at that and make sure.
Let me back up, because some of this is a service, I mean, some of it is something that you're providing people that live here. And so it doesn't have to cover, and you don't, and some, somebody disagree with you, tell me to be quiet, but it doesn't have to cover a hundred percent of it, especially for folks that are already paying taxes in your community. But it should be enough that it's not just a token fee, if that, if that makes any sense.
So estimate two hundred thousand, I'm sorry, if you went up a little bit, but you're still doing quality of line, I was trying to help you, I wanna, let's.
And I don't know, I don't know how to handle that.
Opposed to that, looking at.
So what are you suggesting on rental?
I, I don't, I don't have a suggestion, these, I mean, I, I think we could do an evaluation of those and see if, and ask these local people, is this covering the cost of the labor that it costs to make this available to people? Is it covering the utility costs? Is it covering the, you know, a portion of the insurance? Is it covering a portion?
Could figure that out.
I mean, that could be figured out.
Tommy said, Black said he was working on that, I asked that question, but follow up with it, just to get you on what you say. I'd love to see the cost of revenue, because I think the Civic Center's probably costing us, what, eight hundred thousand a year?
I can look that up for you.
Look it up.
Ballpark.
Don't now work, now work.
Ballpark, it is costing us five hundred thousand a year. The car, it is costing us, I, I had that number, forgot, so it is not small dollars here. But quality of life is what you've got to balance, and again, it's what it costs. But what are the, uh, what are you still looking for?
I'm looking for, we have the same packet, Larry, I'm looking for.
That, that explains why I always ask the questions, because it takes you to look a lot.
Nathan, let you.
Cause you don't wanna look it up yourself, you don't, I give, why don't I give you a packet? Why don't we even give you a packet, Larry?
Just give me the bottom line.
Larry says, read it to me.
Okay, you know, guys, if I start cussing, y'all just bleep it out.
The general fund.
Oh, wow.
Oh, nothing was.
No, stuff was taken away.
But, but here's where I'm at, to, to, to fund everything.
Cut from twenty-one of these to fifteen of these. Took some vehicles out, we took some, some different stuff.
I think it's three point seven five, I'm saying three point five.
So, so to fund everything, we still have a surplus?
Well, the general fund, the general fund has a surplus, the capital, operating funds have a surplus, all the operating funds have a surplus, small and big. Uh, the capital, capital funds are, are not, are not, I mean, and so generally what you guys have done, well, this is what you've always done. Just, you come up with a surplus in your general fund, you do a fund transfer to cover capital expenses.
Right.
Um, and, you know, that's, that's one of the things I will tell you, and I was hoping that Councilman Kelly would be here.
Nine hundred eighty-one thousand, Larry, it's on page four.
Okay.
That's why I was looking at it for. JP, that's why I'd like to see the total number, not just how much here and there, you got your total number, then you can buy it up.
Right.
Where it goes. Is that the mayor, was that after, uh, revenues were taken out?
Hold on a sec, let's take one.
Six, yeah, you just asked for the cost, now you're gonna be.
Okay.
So.
Well, I want to take as quick as possible, but there's something else to be, I'll set that now.
So one of the things that you asked, Councilman Lawrence, is about breaking this down into this, that, the other, currently, we are working very desperately in breaking down revenues by who they go to. Uh, and you'll see that there's some of that in there already, but that won't cover the grants for the Carnegie, it'll just cover the total revenue for the Carnegie. So when we split it out, it, it's gonna be, well, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get it split out a couple of different ways to show that. Somebody else had something, I've, I've got something, but I won't, I won't get y'all.
JP had some.
No, I was, I was, I just wanted to know where we, where we stood there.
The one guy, can we go back to your number three and going through the suggestions that you had?
I don't remember what number three was, I'm skipping right on.
The first, the first one was, that's wrong, the first one was around a hundred thousand, the second one was looking at maybe rentals.
Yeah, I mean, that might, um, a third one, it will not generate much money at all, but it's the same argument. And that we're doing recreation services to the cost of the services that we provide through parks and rec, do they cover themselves, or at least cover enough of themselves? Again, the idea that we're providing a service. And, and I, I will tell you that I, I talked last night with a member of the park board in a social situation. And, uh, you know, he said, he said, what, first of all, and this is just an aside, you guys approved that recreation management software? I was on a two-hour meeting that they needed me for five minutes yesterday when I was trying to work on other things, right, Chelsea? But, um, and, uh, the recreation management software is going to be phenomenal. But one of the things that you, we will get out of that are metrics that will let you identify the programs that are successful and the ones that aren't, and that will be useful.
So does that include the Civic Center, the Fairgrounds, and the ned?
Yes.
Oh, it does?
It will allow you to reserve those facilities, the whole land yours. Uh, now, as far as, when I was on that metrics, I'm thinking, how many kids like to play battle chess? It's gonna help you figure that out, whether that makes, whether that works or not.
Who signed up for classes?
Who signed it up for, yeah, is this working or is this not working? That's one of the things that we'll do, but, but the question is, do the programs that, that we offer at these different recreation facilities and different programs, do they cover their cost? You generated a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars last year, which is not a lot of money. I'm sure it covered the soccer registration fees, because we, and all of that stuff. But, you know, is, do we need to adjust that? It would be minimal, it's a minimal amount of money, nothing we're talking about is a huge amount of money, you know, you, I mean, you're.
But you're getting up to five hundred thousand.
Good, and then, then there are some, there are some more obscure things, uh, you know, that, um, that we could get into. The one thing that I was gonna say is I, I wish Councilman Kelly were here. Uh, he asked me back in November, when, uh, I was still incredibly green, uh, behind the ears, and also I was trying to figure out, um, how to, uh, issue bonds for y'all. And Larry was calling me a couple of times a week.
Ten o'clock at night.
And it was, it was perfectly fine, and I talked to you quite a bit, but we were doing it, Councilman Kelly said, what do we, he said, what do we generate on city stairs? And he, and he asked me that, and he said, what would it be if we were to increase our city sticker fees? Cause that is a user-based fee, I mean, you know what I'm saying, I mean, it's like, um, and, and so I finally got around to that a week or two ago and said that to him. Uh, city stickers net about a hundred, a one point three, uh, eight million dollars right now, at, at a fee of twenty-five dollars per city sticker, which is a lot, by the way. Um, it's one point three eight six million dollars. Um, if you were to double that, and somebody, let's, let's see what the room, let's see what the room thinks about math, I'm not proposing doubling, I'm just seeing how your math works. If you doubled from twenty-five to fifty, how much revenue would that generate?
One point eight.
One point three eight six million, because you're doubling it.
I was like, yes, yeah. I'm really, I even looked up a phrase to make sure it would be okay to say that phrase. So I'm gonna, let's go ahead and address it, if you talk about doubling, it's twenty-five dollars if you go up to fifty dollars. I would like to know, that's a big deal to some people. Is that bang for the buck? And that's an okay term to use, I looked it up, Roosevelt or somebody using it, it's okay. Um, I don't, I, I'm, it concerns me, it, it does concern me, because people that are really budgeting their money. I, I just want us to really think about that and think it through, and is.
Same people have signed up for, we're also talking about, we're doing increases in parks and rec, those are the same people doing that, too, so I mean, it's.
Well, maybe it's not, but a tiny bit, when you're doubling something, it just.
So doing twenty-five, do ten?
I don't know, but then is, I, I think we have to get there, but I want us to really be mindful of how we're getting there. Honestly, it's once a year, and I don't think people are, I mean, I would like that.
I don't, I don't think, I mean, you probably generate more money, you don't wanna raise taxes, because a lot of people don't drive cars, a percentage of people haven't owned a car.
Yeah, I mean, but I go, I'm like, oh, is this much? Oh, okay, like, I, I don't even remember, but, but most people, because you only do it once a year.
Yeah, I think, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'd like, I mean, I think it's a great idea, I don't wanna be the grease. I really would almost like to say to just be, well, blunt, that we take on our general fund this year, and then next year, we start really looking at, okay, when is the turf gonna pay off? Let's put a half a percent there, Great Wood Lodge in three years, that's four million dollars, we could probably take one million, you know? But how are we really gonna do the three point five? I mean, I'm just asking the difficult question, if we can't cut somewhere, we're gonna have to depend on this general fund balance, or, excuse me, our fund balance. And then next year, we're gonna have to really look at, okay, you know, we can't do it every year. So to me, it's just kind of like in the game to say, okay, let's figure out another way. Am I wrong, or?
If we, unless we deal with a problem of income, I think this may be where you're going earlier, unless we deal with a problem of income, it's like a nonprofit, it's like a family. If you don't deal with the idea of the income streams coming in, we're gonna have this same meeting every year to figure out how we do stuff.
Absolutely.
I agree with you, I have a question, rhetorical question, too, how much has our revenue grown the last three years?
You can look.
I know you can look, I can look, well, my point is, well, I, it was rhetorical question, my point is, we need a history to see, is revenue our problem, or is expenses our problem? And how do you do that? You look at history, and you gotta have, not piece by, piece by piece, you gotta have the total right there, so you can.
Now, there's a little, there's a little bit of different component, because we're growing faster now than we've grown in, in a period of time. So there are streets, there.
Absolutely, there's, there's money you gotta spend for growth, I, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with everything you're saying, my point is, so we don't know where we are. We don't have any history of what a revenue have done, you know, it's, it's, and here we're not, I think we're way ahead of ourselves talking about any kind of tax increase, when we don't know how much money we raised last three years.
Why don't you look at, um, if you can, look at, uh, revenue that the city generates from out-of-town visitors? Like the hotel motel tax and everything that visitors pay.
Aren't we getting all the, is that an actual low that we can't know?
It is almost impossible to get a hotel motel tax increase through the state legislature.
There you go.
I got a man here that gets preach on it, yes.
What can we increase without going through the state that visitors pay for?
Well.
The Great Wood Lodge supposedly is going to be a million dollars a year in direct taxes, which doesn't mean in the community, plus all that community taxes.
But that's three years down the road.
Two.
No.
Four.
Still isn't.
My point is, it'll be a dollar.
It'll be done now.
It, it, well, I'm with you, and, and the, the, these sports parks, that's gonna be a driver of more revenue.
Yeah, you're on the same page.
You know, I mean, there, there's certain things, you, you gotta weigh that against the quality of, how much are we willing to pay to have the, the Civic Center, because it's the right thing to do?
Yeah, so I think, you know, doing something to increase revenue from out-of-state visitors, out-of-town visitors, I don't think they would notice, because they don't know what it is now.
Well, restaurants do wine, restaurants charge almost six percent for a glass of wine, and some restaurants aren't doing that, and some are saying, well, I can charge up to six percent a glass of wine, and they're coming in. So he does have a really fair point, I don't know, we used to call it a hamburger tax, or we.
Forty, forty percent, forty percent of your revenue is generated with property tax, give or take. Sixty percent of your revenue is based on grants and essentially usage taxes, usage.
He didn't mean.
Grants, usage taxes, one-time fees, things like that, okay? Um, of that sixty percent, of that forty percent are essentially, have I made this speech in front of them before?
Disco head.
We're slow, we are, partners.
Um, forty percent of those, forty or so percent of those are basically indexed to inflation, because they're consumption-based. And so the more that somebody spends, the more the city makes. Now, you know, and I know, that the costs that the city encourages to provide the services to the people that live here are also inflation-sensitive, okay? So let's. So let's say that sixty percent, but a good, strong forty for sure are indexed to inflation, okay? That leaves you fifty percent, give or take, that are not. Now, uh, that fifty percent that are not includes property tax, it includes some things like state street revenue and some other things. But, um, some of those numbers you can change and some of them you can't. The state street revenue figures are tied very closely to statewide economic prosperity, whatever the statewide thing is, because it's based on population. The big thing is that all of our expenses are inflation-sensitive. I mean, but only four, only sixty, fif, uh, fifty or sixty percent of our revenues are inflation-sensitive. And so, now, yes, we've generated thirty million dollars in new construction since, uh, the last time you, you levied a property tax, which actually increases the amount of tax money that you collect. I mean, I, there's a connection there. But that thirty million dollars in new construction also has a demand for services attached to it. They expect a policeman to drive by and a curb to be cleaned.
And, and the road to.
And so just because you generated two million dollars in new property tax, we're gonna spend that. Austin Clark, it's gonna, it's gonna be coming up.
We, we had a conversation, I think, the four of us had after a meeting, was a residential neighborhood by itself is a net loser for proceeds. But you get the people in because you're getting commercial, you're getting industry, that, all that goes along with it. That's why you see the increase, but if your standalone residential neighborhood does not provide us a net increase in revenue.
But we'd still have to off that, uh, we have to have adequate infrastructure to continue that growth.
Well, we won't let it come soon. You know, I mean, that's where we're gonna, so.
Let me go back to what I, is there any revenue source that the City of Jackson can increase that would be directed toward out-of-town visitors? That's what I wanna know.
I cannot think of one.
I, I would argue no, because your sales taxes already have a cap, and then hotel motel required a state law change, and the state is very reluctant to change those.
So the answer is no.
So the, the way you do that is by increasing visitors coming to your city to get their spend, not be able to change the rate.
All right, ask him a question.
And a concern is that we've seen that kind of get flat, correct?
Well, so the hotel motel tax has declined just a little bit over the last couple of quarters, I guess, for lack of a better phrase. I think some of that is responsive, I mean, it's winter time. And, you know, we, we did show a modest increase there. One of the ways that you can increase that particular tax is to fill up your hotels and build more. I mean, you know, that works.
And, and. I like what we're doing.
And we're doing that. You know, try to make it more conducive for folks to make those kind of investments, and I think, I think the City of Jackson is, is doing that. But, you know, and then you're seeing, I mean, our twelve month, our twelve-month average on sales tax has declined three consecutive months, uh, right now.
State-wise, doesn't it?
State-wise, it's number two.
So that, that being what?
The twelve-month average for sales tax collected has declined for the last three consecutive months, which is the longest decline that you've seen since 2022. At least the longest decline here. Now, it's not a huge amount of dollars, Mayor.
Yeah, statewide is faster than under seventy-nine million.
Yeah.
It was, under, under projected revenue is two hundred and twelve million, under revenues of April last, and so.
But, I mean, we still expect revenue growth in sales tax, absolutely, and so. Where are you gonna get your three and a half million dollars? Actually, where are you gonna get five and a half? Because you really wanna stick into the two million in there to go pay something, don't you?
We really do.
I'm just picking the number.
Going back to what you said to maybe double, I, I think, you know, council just needs to think through that. But if you designate that, if you're gonna raise maybe one point three million, then you would wanna say, okay, let's put that towards roads.
Well, you're.
But I don't know.
We had to designate that, we had to redesign it every year, and so is what we're doing.
Now, you're, you're, and I, I mean, many cities.
We have to redesign one.
If, if we're gonna earmark it for, for roads, to do something like that, it's not something that you just do it once and then it's in perpetuity, you have to redesign it every year.
And I protect your same earmark, because that's where we do need to be, I think, thinking towards. But realistically, we have got to, councils got to think, you really need a fair minimum of five, I think, ten per year for infrastructure.
I wanna go back to income, own car stickers.
Yes.
Restaurant car.
Uh huh.
I just did one yesterday.
Right.
Fifty-six dollars, I think.
Uh huh.
Do we get the fifty-six, or we get the twenty-five for the city stickers?
You get the twenty-five for the city sticker.
Twenty-five.
And you actually get, uh, I can't remember what percentage it is, they take a small feat to collect it, it's like twenty-four point eight ten.
I thought you said it was twenty-five dollars.
It's twenty-five.
Yeah, but you got, you have county registration too.
Okay, all right, number two.
And so, you know, um, now, most cities that collect a, a will tax are a city sticker, it's not, it's not a will tax.
What are our other cities?
It's, it's, uh, it's a city sticker, it's not a tax at all. The, um, there's a reason for that, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, it sounds like fun with words.
It is, but, uh, and so most cities that collect those do dedicate them to, uh, to streets. I mean, you know, and I, I don't know what the municipal code says here, uh, but a, a lot of them will say, you know? Now, that's a pretty wide swath, what you say, you know, because, uh, a city, you know, as long as they spend more on their street department than they collect the city stickers, then they're technically spending it on streets, you know? But you guys could, you guys could restrict that further, uh, and I, I think that that would be the wisest thing to do if you were to do that, is to say, this new revenue, we're going to say, this is going to be infrastructure lending. Actually, don't call it infrastructure, call it street, call it street lending, because infrastructure is a pipe.
Well, okay.
See, the only, the, the only way that we could lock that in perpetuity is do a special enterprise, not other than that. It'd have to be re, they have to be re, um.
You could, yes, sir.
Yeah, if it's, if it's not.
I'm not inscrutable, so it would do.
Yeah, it does not establish every year, it's not, you have to be reestablished.
So.
I'm noble.
Not the prettiest.
Yeah, you guys.
Eight before beauty, though.
So basically, all what we've talked about.
It's almost nine o'clock.
So basically, all what we've talked about.
Isn't that fast?
This is to you and to the mayor. Basically, what we all, we've talked about, what's your recommendation as to what the council should do to raise this three and a half and/or the three and a half plus the extra two million? What's your recommendation to the council as to what action we should adopt?
I mean.
If you have a recommendation, you might not have one.
Well, I mean, first of all, it's not necessarily my place to have a recommendation. I'll just be honest with you, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a hell guy, not a why guy, you know what I'm saying? I mean, how do you do this? I can tell you where the revenue sources are, the ones that you choose, that's a decision you need to make.
We gonna make it.
Oh, no.
It doesn't have to ask, you, you have a recommendation.
You said hand or major, now, that's not one true recommendation.
Yeah, now, I think we look at the revenue sources, I mean, is obviously, you wanna cut, we can, we can cut more. That's just, you make, you have to tell the departments what they're not getting. You know, we've looked through operating, uh, we had, so we had a conversation with, uh, departments about the definition of critical, and some, some departments even made additional cuts after that, and so, uh, you look at our operating budget, we've, we've cut it down to, everything we've cut it down to. And capital loaded, some of them, like with the new computers, have been cut in half. There's been, uh, some equipment that's been, you know, the dollar amount, the total must've been cut in half or more because they were budgeting for hiring eighteen new firefighters, as opposed to a realistic number. So, yeah, I think, that's your option, we look at what the revenue options are, we look at what we're gonna cut, and that's fine.
So you're suggesting not to look at fund balance?
I think we get into a dangerous, I think we get into what we got into in your facet, just kicking the can. I mean, we can.
If you got to a point, so in the last, in the last two weeks, uh, in conversations with, with the mayor, it's like, oh, this number's, oh, look, we're looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's three quarters of one percent, and he says, that's still a lot of money. You know, I mean, and I'm like, so you're taking out a fund balance, you say, I wanna take the million and a half out of fund balance. Million and a half out of a twenty million dollar fund balance is, is still. It's still a lot of money. Now, you get down to something you've gotta do, do you have to, I mean, do you, do you have to put a new roof on the civic center in order to keep the thing open? That's when you get fund balance, huh?
Or AC.
Or, you know, I mean.
If we were to double the, the twenty-five to fifty, that would only total generate two point seven.
It's not that much, it's near one point four, one point nine.
One point three eight six.
And, and you're talking about possibly putting that on roads.
Oh, yes.
So that's not coming up with your, the three point five.
But he puts money back into roads that we want to budget for.
It does, it will give us some, but I think more critical right now, and I'm all for roads, and I'll never, but where's the three point five? Did I miss something?
No, 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 no. I didn't, I didn't follow the test.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you do fine, you're doing, you're doing excellent. What I was gonna, how does the bond issue play into this now? Because you're talking about, how much of that bond issue is set aside for roads? Here's my whole thing, look at the total picture.
Nine point, nine point eight.
Okay, and, and we had.
We have four point six in this contract we're doing now, five point two in the one to.
And the bond also, we had, I think, when it got settled, drilled down, six hundred thousand homeless center.
Right.
And that's going to the five point two for.
We don't count any down now?
No, no.
So, okay, now, what else is in that bond issue? We had some cars, and I think now you're talking about helping lease those, and so this, this, I'm, this is why, I wanna see the whole picture.
I think, I think going forward, talking about leasing, what we already have from the bond issue, we already presented bond.
Okay, this, it will not be this year, that will not be. So, so our final, uh, uh, bond issue is not in here, we don't have those numbers yet.
No.
When can we have those?
That's up to. Yeah, it's still on. And so, I mean, still gonna be, so that's why we have the two point eight, hold on, it's gonna be, our two point eight bits revenue allocated to debt service to cover the bond issue.
Right, but I, exactly what is in it right now, the bottom line, I'd like to see it as soon as we can, I know we work a lot.
Just say.
We're just cheaping those stuff, talking about.
So the twenty, yeah, the twenty-six million, we, we itemized all that out, we had, you read about that, you should.
Right.
We should all have that.
It's nothing changed.
No, nothing's changed, no. No, nothing, nothing can change, and that's why you all said change it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you send out the final?
I have, so, I have a pull of my computer right now.
We can preside it all along, it'll help make it out.
It just gets down to, I, I think we're still kicking something down the road.
Let's ask some questions, when's the last time we raised tax?
Two thousand and three.
There you go. What'd you say?
Two thousand and three, last summer.
I mean.
I think the question is not, is how much revenue has grown since then, and I don't know.
But he making a point, though, we, I mean, I would think, we don't wanna raise tax, that's the only thing we want to do.
Twenty years.
But we can't keep on.
Okay, when you all were saying this, I want you to think through it, and I do think Larry is making a very valid point.
But they're, they're just, they're talking about options, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not saying do it.
Let them talk, don't stop them when they're talking about it.
We let you sell.
Yeah, and you talked about the twenty-five dollars added, so that's still an option, so we still saying, we can't keep on.
I'm just asking a question.
I don't think we wanna raise taxes.
I didn't say nobody wants.
But we can't keep on saying, or like, keeping the cane down the road, like, don't do it, we gotta do something.
I just want.
My banker was talking to me, and I was sitting in this situation. He would say, Frank, you either gotta cut your spending, or you've gotta have some more income streams.
Right.
And so, we quit talking about income streams, and we look at borrowing to, to feed our children, to take the dog to the vet, and we, we're not touching income. We're touching it by, it just kinda happening. By our growth, it just kinda happens, not because we've done a whole lot, other than we've encouraged it. We have an income stream problem that we're gonna have to deal with.
I saw news question would come up at some point. I didn't think you'd ask it.
There's media, everybody, talk it over.
It was, I'm on camera, yeah.
Nineteen, nineteen ninety-eight, our property tax rate was two dollars and twenty-four cents. They dropped down to a dollar ninety-eight, and then raised it two dollars and twenty-two cents in two thousand and three, and since then, the rates dropped down to one dollar sixty-one, sixty-one fourteen.
We did make a mistake, uh, for a pause.
Two thousand and twenty-two.
We, we made a mistake in, uh, anyway. All I was gonna say.
I think that's an important point, too, in two thousand and twenty-three, when we did adopt the certified tax rate through the formula which the state provided to us, we actually, we didn't, we didn't come out whole, right? We actually reduced the property tax intake by four hundred thousand dollars.
Now, that was wrong.
It was definitely, yeah, just that might happen, it's not what we have.
So now, if we would, if the recommendation at that time was a dollar eighty-four, we'd have left it there, we had everything covered plus a one point six million dollar surplus.
Yeah.
Then I'll say probably every ten minutes, but that's when you go back and, and look at, overall, you, I might be on your side saying, let's raise taxes. But you gotta look at the history and see, how much has our revenue gone? Have we been prudent in spending that revenue? Or we just saying now, we gotta have no money.
That's the point I did wanna make, that when we go to the public and say, we've got a revenue problem, we do wanna be very, um, have all the material that we can say, here's, here's what, here's what we've done for the past ten years. So I do think he has.
But the majority of people out there, they won't believe that, because they will believe that the City of Jackson is spending way too much money on things that we shouldn't be spending on, and they think we get kickbacks also.
But I want you to really think about.
Martha has new dresses on.
And I'll spend my money till I don't have a dime, what I can, what I'm gonna do.
Got on a trip.
You just got back from Greece. Where your camel on in here?
That's my favorite music.
I'm gonna go over to this, she goes, I'm gonna go to the beach, and that's it. All right, we gotta get back, anyway. I, I was spending my money, but it is the tax, because we have a, a clear picture where Larry feels comfortable, we want everyone, and even though you think that people don't care, it's our obligation to be able to prove that and explain it.
And I, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree, and we, we try to be well-prepared for that. But I'm thinking, most people don't understand the financials of the city. At, at times, I think, we don't understand.
I just, of course, if we raise, say, twenty-five dollars in taxes, what would be different? I mean, because still, you raising twenty-five, you actually pay twenty-five more dollars for.
It's one point.
Yeah, and that doesn't cover the full amount that we need.
One million three hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
But that can't go to this, it would go to roads.
It would have to go to roads, right?
So you're not addressing.
You're still three million short.
Correct, three point seven five.
But you have a funding mechanism to take care of a constant problem.
And the thing is, you know.
Very small.
These individuals, department heads, come to us, and they tell us, this is what they need. They know that better than I do. I can't go back and tell them, well, you don't need, and, and, you know.
And we ask that question every last one of them.
And, and, and look, I know we're on camera, and I know we got media here, and, but, you know, I don't mind saying the, the difficult things here. I'm not voting for a tax increase in twenty-seven when we're up for election. I'm gonna vote for it now.
There you go.
It's smart, guys. There you go.
Well, I, well, I mean, I'm just saying.
Hey, you said, I'm not voting for it this year.
Well, hey, at least I'm honest, you know?
I don't have to be here, so I keep saying, I don't have to be here. Let's go back, we gotta, we need to figure out, yeah.
So what's the penny is?
A penny of property tax right now raises two hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is thirteen thousand dollars more than it raised a year ago at this time, by the way, which is a nice, that's part of the assessment.
So to cover this deficit and use property taxes to do it, how much of an increase would be necessary?
Well, ten, uh, ten cents is raised two point three million dollars, and so you don't wanna do ten cents. I mean, I don't think you do, but, um, you know.
Oh, is this ten cents?
Wait, now, let, let him ask a question before we get to something else. Well, what, how many pennies would it be?
It'd be fifteen, almost sixteen pennies.
Sixteen cents. We had one six to one now.
One six, one fourteen.
Seven one, seven to six. One seven to six or one seven to seven, take care of it.
You get one, it'd be one seventy-four.
Now, your concept by your person's house.
Anybody know what your house is?
So, again, so, so an average, I knew this question was gonna come up again, too. Uh, the average value of a house in, in the city of Jackson is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, if you add the, uh, it'd be eighty-two dollars a year.
Well, that averages, that average house, that average house.
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two dollars, yeah.
That's not that much.
If I, you know, we're gonna have this conversation, I would have a sheet to show what your property tax is.
Yeah.
Excellent.
It makes this point every time, but it, I must say.
Well, but the fact is, uh, and, and like, like for example with me, because I have a mortgage, I don't see that. It's factored into my mortgage.
Yeah, it's not ours.
So. It doesn't even really.
You know, you can, you can, you can infer.
Why we can't?
Because I see the.
Well, I, yeah, but you got some more is playing like, you know.
Work this year and then tell the public, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna do this. It's like now.
It's like, it's like his counsel every time he said that word.
There you go.
They raised my taxes about twenty-five. I got raised about twenty-five.
Somebody's not doing it election year and I'm, it's wrong.
Well, but I'm honest. It may be wrong, but I'm honest.
But let's just do it.
Be careful of a politician saying he's honest.
Really?
And a preacher.
The preaching, baby.
I'm just telling you, I ain't voting to do it in twenty-seven, so if you're gonna do it.
You're gonna do it.
I thought you were. He was. So what, what is our, let's get back together. What, what are we to accomplish today here? What's, what, what are we to accomplish today?
Well, I think we're, the goal is.
I'm sorry?
Y'all.
They, he's trying to, they're trying to.
Okay, let's wait, because I want to hear.
So the, the goal, the goal that Nathan and Ron and I've set out is, and we might not make, is that we can have on the agenda the, uh, the F R twenty-six budget for first reading at the regular council meeting, then have a special call middle of June, second week of June to finalize the budget, took this minute to the state before Jim thirty. Now, it has to be a balanced budget. And so if that's balanced means that you're, that what you're spending and what you're taking in, that taken in could be from fund balance, it could be from your revenue, whatever. Um, so we can't pass a deficit budget, stay tuned to this, allow that. Um, so if we can't get to a point of what we want to do, what we want to cut, what we want to fund, what we want to do today, then we can't have it on the agenda because the agenda will go out tomorrow afternoon, Monday morning, uh, my Tuesday morning. Uh, for the two week council, yeah, council meeting, week and a half, yeah.
We've had to make a lot of changes in part-time personnel because of, uh, fair, fair, I assume, the sports center and all this stuff. Uh, could we have a history of what the personnel costs have been for the last three years because it's so muddled? We had four employees gone down the, down the. Yeah, 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 let, here getting back to the total package, go back.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
We gotta do something.
I think part of the issue that we've had with us three years is working spreadsheets in one of them, so.
I'm ready to answer it. I can rest for you right now.
Basically, we gotta deal with it.
If twenty-three were his minutes, I can always.
What is the, what is the tax rate for comparable cities?
Uh, I can tell you that, actually. Um, so one of the things that in preparing for the budget book, can't publish that until we have the final numbers. Um, but one of the things we looked at was comparing Jackson's tax rate to the big four cities as well as a similar, roughly similar sized city in each grand division. So, uh, if you look, uh, so Jackson's one sixty-one, if you rounded the nearest penny, Memphis is three dollars nineteen. Bartlett is one seventy-three, Nashville is three twenty-five, Clarksville is a dollar twenty-three, Chattanooga is two dollars and twenty-five cents. Knoxville's two dollars and sixteen cents, and Johnson City is a dollar ninety-eight.
So there you go.
And then when you compare that, though, to the average, the average home value, so one of the things we did is we looked at the average home sale of, in every one of those cities in February. So when you apply that to the average home sale of a February house, the average annual property tax burden, if you just took like the most recent data. Jackson's is eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, Memphis is one thousand, four hundred and seventy-five, Bartlett is one thousand, four hundred and sixty-four, Nashville's three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight, Clarksville's nine fifty-three.
That's one of the ones to compare.
Chattanooga, one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four, Knoxville's two thousand, one hundred and thirty-six, and Johnson City is one thousand, five hundred and ninety-four.
Clarksville's, Clarksville's.
Clarksville's is the closest at a hundred and thirty dollars more per year.
Yeah.
What's their rate?
Uh, their rate is a dollar twenty-three.
Their rate's less than, but they have a lot of sales tax, I suppose they have army base there, so.
Yeah, 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 a lot, a lot.
They have, they have an army base, so they have.
Yeah. Huge. On that report, they also show the sales tax. It is, I'd like to see that beside it, because that goes out.
The sales tax of what their sales tax rate is?
What, how much money they generate.
That's, that's it?
Oh.
That's, that's. Which is, y'all used to bring those reports to county commission.
What, what's that?
Well, and green risk tax.
You, you either cut or you know, raise your revenue. I mean, there's, it's not. Ex-counsel from the.
You don't.
Hey, you know?
Well, one thing I think it's important to remember is what Nathan kind of alluded to is, is what of your revenue funds are indexed to inflation, sales tax, size, property tax is not over time. That's, that's what the issue you're talking about.
Well, it would be over time, but not per year.
Not necessarily because with certified tax rate, we mean revenue neutral.
That's the idea.
Oh, yeah, you got to, the state requires you to do that if you want to change it.
So when does, so, if you have a, if you have a city that's not thriving, everything's still inflationary, but then the property values start to decrease and it's.
When does it change again?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven is the next reassessment, replacement.
That's what we're going for.
So I mean, here's a, here's a, to just, about JP here, um, if you all would, we all would decide to do that, and reappraisal happens in twenty-seven. You know, probably all the property values we'll raise will be out of, reappraisal in twenty-two, we didn't have a choice, but commercial and retail saw a drastic decrease in value because a lot of them were empty because of coming out of COVID. Twenty-seven, we have a lot full now. Um, and so values will increase, so the actual rate or certified rate will drop down.
Your point of waiting and using fund balance, because all this, well, helps big money.
Are you trying to keep him in office?
Anything I can do. JP's really a good guy.
He doesn't really mean this right now.
No, I'm just, I, I just, you know, we gotta get an answer and we gotta get it in June, so that's, you know.
Take it at fund balance and all these wonderful things happen next year, we'll all be talking about how great growth in Jackson.
Well, I would only go with that if we would put into place kind of like a forecast committee that make them. Because you, you do have a lot of different components, like some of the things I'm thinking about since being on council is we were gonna put a tax for downtown businesses that were not advertising, if they were for sale. Yeah, I don't know if we're recouping anything from that.
We got, I think, less than two thousand because a lot of them are, are listed on the M L S, so they have building permits posted. There's a lot of caveats in there, and so. You look at our downtown now, I think she said it's a four percent vacancy rating in downtown? I mean, it's dra, I mean, it's reduced drastically now.
It's phenomenal.
It's.
It is phenomenal.
You can see it. You couldn't have walked down with me saying.
I would take a, but I'm, if we were committed.
Yeah, no, it's, it's low. I mean, it may not be four, maybe fourteen. I bet I think it's four.
Oh, well, still, if it's under twenty or twenty-five, it's good.
Yeah, it's, it was, it's shocking. When you think about it, we only have.
I said, we got such a great tax base. We just, especially we store the money right, the money ought to be here.
They're not gonna be no educate, I, I, I don't mean that to be disrespectful to any constituent. They're not gonna be edu, they expect us to be educated. That's why they elect us. And the, the fact is, you're still, at, at some point, and I, I don't want to do it, but at some point, then, then next year, we're right back where we are of draining the fund balance or raising taxes. It, it.
Well, the only thing I'd argue about that right now, we have the tax cuts to come across in Washington, and that will probably generate more money. It will probably, it will generate more money than it's, than it's costing you to pay. All we need is one percent growth and you're out of it.
I'm sorry, I'm lost.
Say that again.
I was talking about. I, I didn't mean to go over there. No, it's weird, you're not, though. I, Washington.
Like, he's fueling, he's fueling.
My point is, my point is.
So taxes is, is raising taxes is not the answer. A lot of times, cutting taxes is.
So maybe we cut taxes in Jackson. Yeah, we're well under, we're well under where.
We cut it in twenty-two.
What's the figure that you quote?
We did, we did our cutting. And it worked. We grow it.
The thing, the, the ratio you cut, uh, in, in Greece, tax.
Probably, we cut actually with.
Four thousand. I don't want to.
You're not, you're not.
I don't want to depend.
That is, four thousand, not one.
Yeah, listen, listen to Ron.
So Larry, I don't want to depend on it trickling down from Washington. I don't.
No, 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 that wasn't my point. My point was cutting taxes, raising it, go.
One, one of the things that we have the numbers for, and would be, I think, also important to note, talk about, of being under. If your spending had just kept up with population plus inflation since twenty-twenty, you would have spent seven point three million dollars more since twenty-twenty.
Wow. Per year, or?
That's cumulative, cumulative.
For, you're talking about for city.
For the city.
For the city.
What do you use for population then?
I use Jackson's annual census data population. The, the new number literally was, uh, published last week while you were having the budget meeting. You're now at sixty-nine, three oh three. So that's a, just a little over one percent of population growth plus last year's C P I, that puts you at four point five.
You said since two thousand and twenty-four?
Since two thousand and twenty.
Two thousand and twenty. So seven point three.
It, it will be in the budget book once we get the numbers, uh, it'll be published.
So we're underspending based on population.
You are underspending based on population plus inflation. So essentially what you have.
Revenue number is just your Ross.
It, it, that is, I use chain C P I.
What was?
Well, it, it's a.
It was Trump dot org.
It's, it's, it's not a dollar. It's three oh four point six one five to three oh three point five six six. It's an index.
So, Councilman, uh, Councilperson Wallace, um, I'm not saying not to hit fund balance. I'm saying you don't need to hit fund balance for three and a half million dollars a year after you're here.
I agree.
Which you've been, I'll be honest, you've been budgeting to do that for some significant amount of money. Um, if, if you do a revenue adjustment of some site, somewhere, to cover the need, whether it's, I'm not even gonna say that, that word. Uh, but if, if you do these things, you can use some fund balance because we're also gonna be optimistic. I mean, right? We're, we're gonna say, I mean, I, I, I feel like our property tax, uh, receipts will be higher than what, than perhaps what we estimate. I feel like our sales tax will be higher than, than what we estimate. I think you'll come out better. But I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable taking three and a half million dollars out of fund balance this year and next year and next year and next year because all of a sudden, we're gonna be like looking for the couch cushions and there aren't many cushions in this building. Um, but.
I would like to look at forecasting, and I know that you can, you can do that. I would love to help. I know there's people that would, but when we do look at our growth, we do look at the ball field, when we do look maybe three or four years down the road at Great Book Lodge, then you have to offset the new fire station. I'm, I, I really think that this three point seven, we will come out without, but I, I can't go on a feeling. We have to do that on the fact. I feel like we will get there with our revenue, is what I'm saying. I do think that we'll be close to that.
So that, I mean, not to the final point of it, um, but you, and you guys have had some really great conversations here tonight. If I step out of line, somebody tell me to shut my mouth. But what are you gonna do?
We're gonna take our fund balance and do a better job of monitoring where we are and making some good forecasts and report to the city council every month instead of waiting to do anything else.
Do you want to, do you want to look at your, do you want to look at city sticker? Do you want to find a number somewhere between a, a, a zero dollar increase and a twenty-five dollar increase? Do you, do you want to do that? Do you want?
If, if council go, but you, I think we're looking at the apples and the oranges. If that's going for roads, that's still not.
A hundred percent.
It's, it are three point five.
But if, but, I mean, if you're going to eat to three million in fund balance.
I see what you're saying. It is a good.
What are you gonna do about the roads?
It, it is a great, it is a good idea. I just want the councilmen to be comfortable with their constituents. That twenty-five, fifty dollars could be an awful lot. If they come back to me and they say their constituents, they're, they're comfortable with it.
Well, I can tell you, I'm not comfortable with it. I can tell you that.
That's what I was.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Not twenty-five or fifty, but they might be comfortable with a seventeen cent.
But not double.
Right.
I just did double because the math's easy. But I've got all the other numbers here if you want, but, and so then you're looking. Anytime, anytime you make an upward revenue adjustment, you have to justify the constituents that, while you're doing. You know, now, you guys are doing some amazing, I just about said, anyway.
Yeah.
You guys, you guys are doing some amazing work in, in your parks. It's just, it's absolutely amazing. You're making, some of these are generational improvements in these parks. That is really cool.
They've been waiting generation on them, so.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're making some, I mean, I'm sitting here, I cannot wait to drive down Van Drive, and I hate Van Drive. I want to see what that feels like. Apparently it's amazing.
Oh, I took pictures at eleven o'clock in the.
Yeah.
Right there.
And so, I mean.
We thought something.
And it's, and it's funny because I was, I had a call from, I had a call from a friend the other day about sidewalks and, and where he lives. And I talked to Austin and Austin said, um, we hadn't done it there because of a, a couple of really great reasons, because they're still developing and they don't want to mess the sidewalks up. He said, but that's on the list. And then he told me, how many sidewalks do they actually lay? It's a mind-blowing, man. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, there's good value for the dollar. I mean, the citizens see, I mean, I think the citizens see the investments that we're making. So I, you know, I don't know. I, I do know that if we're gonna meet our deadline to get this out, we gotta, we gotta come up with something.
So if you're wanting it for next council, we need to be able to, to vote on it.
If, if we want to do it by, by the Jim council meeting for first reading, then we have to have numbers for tomorrow to get it on the agenda. Um, and then it would be a, it'd be a special call to get it for the second reading.
Cause council will be June third.
Yeah, so it's gonna go down tomorrow.
And I know the audit committee got the report that if we do it late, they're gonna start assessing us.
That's the audit.
Oh, the audit, apologize.
Yeah, we had, we had, if we're gonna turn it in after, we had to get, what we did last year, to be proven comfortable turning it in.
I'm a little bit concerned about the, um, debts, debt and all because, are we still looking at thirty years? You know, I'd ask, bring some numbers in that would be twenty, just to see. I, I hate to go out thirty years on everything.
I thought they were gonna look at that and see which was best for.
Yes, like, as his hand raised.
Yes.
Cause I'm thinking, I'm just trying to think of if, if it's not, it's not a, like, a critical yet for you.
No, so most of what the police have included.
Do you feel?
I know, most of, most of what.
Handle most of this.
Is.
Our growth.
They don't do it this year, got about twice next year.
With a small increase of some kind.
If they replace, they're replacing ballistic plates.
It works.
The fire department is.
Right, those two, but I'm just thinking.
To be honest, the biggest three is force capital, police, fire, and I T S cut there's actually.
We saw it last. Three hundred thousand.
Um, and, you know. I mean, we're.
Hundred thousand is still up.
Yeah, I mean.
How do I do it?
I don't know.
I mean.
So the bond, the bonds, if we want to look at the. Are you looking, are you kind of, are you?
You mean me or take it?
I'm, I was, I was, someone to know something. I was asking. So as far as the bonds, the different scenarios for the bonds, you're looking at the P D N area. There's a P D N, yeah, actually, I think we created it. You made it. It shows a fifteen, twenty, or, and thirty-year breakdown and what the estimated paybacks on those.
How much is in that now, twenty?
Yeah, twenty dollars, twenty one.
So, so how much have you put in the budget here? You put the thirty-year.
There is nothing about that bond in this budget.
How are we gonna?
If there's money in the.
If there's money in the service you pay.
Well, okay, there we go. That's why I see the total.
That's why when I introduced this, that's why I introduced this earlier, said there's a two point eight million dollar surplus in that survey.
Exactly, that's why you gotta have all the numbers on one sheet so that you see exactly where you are to get at them.
No, so the hedge.
I know, cause.
Don't give us. Should actually be a little sense in there to be, we're gonna take six cents and, and put it on capital, if you took that six cents and we put it in. I, I want to be respectful, I want to be respectful when I say this.
We look.
Oh, I thought you said increasing.
If I prepare a sheet for Candace, it's gonna look different than the one that I was preparing for.
Would it not be in our investment?
And none of these are necessarily. You were broken down. Somebody literally sent in, we're broken down by, uh, the revenue source where they, what they applied to. You were broken down, somebody literally sent in with revenue broken down by, the revenue source where they, what they applied to. I can already do that, that's built into the system right now. So, you know. But she wants recurring revenue versus one time revenue. He wants.
Your turn.
What's local tax versus.
Just a tiny bit, when for the next ten years.
All of this requires.
Unless you're going to raise it every year.
That's why I'd rather raise.
I know, the thing is, I want to fund the revenue. Just generate. Because do you see how many?
Seventeen cents.
Payoffs of revenues.
And just be done, we hadn't done it since two thousand. But he definitely got some trouble.
This is being reported, I mean, but.
No, but it, what it does.
They would have to cut.
Is it?
Like would be the police idea. Not about how much you.
Yeah. We have the, we have the final budget numbers, exactly, it's the budget.
But I got to do that.
This year, she was talking.
I was saying, I mean, the areas that are going to have to cut are police, city, and IT.
So. If you take cumulative past couple, you've been.
You know, do you want to, well, keep the city, you know, running with the proper police, fire, and raise taxes. I mean. I don't, I don't feel comfortable cutting that.
Nobody.
Oh, I'm not at all.
And nobody wants.
No, but like, I mean, you got a point, it's been twenty years.
It's been over twenty years.
That's twenty years.
Right.
It's in all, I mean, nobody's going to be happy.
What has it gone up?
They're going to say, oh, they're raising taxes, think about why we're doing it.
Five dollars, two for five.
Two for five.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Come in here at this late hour and expect us to make that decision by tomorrow. I mean, I have to say, please don't put the word bullshit, but I think, I think.
That's right.
Incredibly for us to try to raise the taxes, which affects everybody, and I'm not there to answer for what he has to say.
And where is.
It's not enough time. It's never enough time, but we should have.
They're lower.
Not like, I'm going to stand for a moment, no, it's not. We should not be expected to make a tax dis- increase in such as an hour and a half.
I think two hours at least. I'm with Amy and Pata Girl.
I'm not doing it because I want to know what my brother, my brother there thinks.
Well, both, I mean, Johnny too.
What you said, the most trouble.
We don't, we don't have.
Johnny said right.
Because of all the locations, little areas, city, city, population.
I'm just one. I'm going to stand strong.
The park store rate was a dollar twenty.
Seven, seven. Clark's, finding someone.
The only one that we looked at that.
But their housing value is much.
Right, so they're, so if you take the average bill, they were the closest, but they were still a hundred and thirty dollars.
Who's that? It's ours back versus ours own. Because we have got it.
Those are the ones we have to cut.
Well, they do too, because they have military.
They have a major base in college.
Do a better job, or councilmen, where we're going to be, and then you go to the public and say we can't do it. We don't have an expense problem, we have a revenue problem.
And revenue is, I mean, when it, when are the terms, the terms?
I'm sorry, I'm going to.
That's our first phase, should be, be in summertime, second phase, probably wintertime we get that done, so it'll be next calendar year before we're done. Kind of like.
What, what are you thinking for, for you?
Next year I should get away.
I trust you. Okay, I, I mean, I, I, I trust you, Martha.
Uh-oh.
I'm not asking.
No, follow.
I'm going to be real, I take this, last year, even though, and I will say on record, I love you. But I had back and forth with him, because I had studied it, he knows it religiously, but I take this extremely seriously. I took those numbers, I worked them and worked them. I am not comfortable in an hour and a half saying, okay, let's raise taxes. I think that's wrong. I think that we look at it, we forecast, and then this coming year, we prepare the public and say, we have a revenue problem. We need your help, we need your understanding, we need your support. You want roads, you want fire, you want police, look at these cities that we're compared to, we're low. We've got people that will stand with us and believe that and understand it, but in an hour and a half, I'm not willing to do that. So that's, sorry if I got goosebumpy, but.
Well, you take it from the fund balance, and then eventually you have to, you're going to have to do it.
And we have to stand committed that we look at where we are, and I do have to say with Larry that we can do a better job. With this Tyler Muniz is coming into effect, Nathan is working probably nine days, Ron's working with him, Scott's talking to department heads. We will be able to do better, but I'm not comfortable in this amount of time, not knowing what's adequate number to actually raise for the next five years. Or we're going to raise every year.
No, you don't raise every year, that, that's not the answer.
But just tagging, tagging on to what you're saying, there've been some tremendous steps forward, but I still haven't seen one sheet of paper that says how many total cars we have, how many police cars, how many, how many are patrol cars, how many have a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles? Matter of fact, wait a second, I got a report from our news source over there that had some of that information last year. But I think that's the type of information we need to go up with, you know, what we need to, to, every year, and, and pay this part of it too.
What do you?
All I was saying is I trust you. I mean, I trust all these people, but you and I have just spent enough time together that I trust you when you say that we're not, that you don't want to do this every year.
Absolutely, you can't.
But the thing is, I'm looking.
Not to look at the business, government does.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at your history here, and this city has a history.
Of doing it every year.
Of doing it every year.
That's the thing.
And so, you know, and, and I am not going to quit saying what I'm saying to you, okay? I mean, I'm, I'm not going to quit drawing your attention to this every year. I don't care how you fix the problem, you just can't keep doing it. You can do it this year.
And I agree.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that straightforward, I do better. You can tell me, you've talked too much, and I would say, thank you for telling me.
You know, just keep talking this year.
Yeah.
I should say thank.
But I'll say it nicely.
But, but essentially, i- if I'm understanding, and I may not be understanding correctly, but if I'm understanding correctly, we take the money from fund balance this year, we're still going to have to turn around and raise taxes the next year.
Well, a piece of work is coming in.
We don't know that. I mean, we, I mean, Elon, they build a factory here, the tax revenue is enough to pay for everything.
He'll be a baby.
Yeah. He'll be a baby, at least for, let's talk about that some other time.
How much revenue?
Well, right.
I mean, I, I don't know, the thing is, I mean, you guys asked me in November if we, and I, and I mean, I hate to quote this again, you guys asked me, if we do this bond, will we have to raise property taxes? I said no, and that is still true, you don't.
Right, right. I remember that, I asked that question. Basically, it's because we borrowed from the future to be able to operate today.
On your capital.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the point being, families cannot operate this way, businesses cannot operate this way. Neither can cities.
Well, I don't know, I don't, I mean, you know, I mean, it's like, I mean, I, I save up money all year to burn through in the summer. Because we drown, you know, and that's, and that's something, I mean, but the, the problem is, and you said you have a revenue problem, the problem is, I save up all my money all year long so I can burn through it in the summer. But if I was only saving a hundred dollars a month, I wouldn't be able to spend much in the summer either, you see what I'm saying? I mean, it's like, you know, so I, back to that, I trust you. But if, we could be having the same conversation next year.
I would have to have a commitment, almost a verbal commitment, we've done that before, just at least try to stick with it, that if we do borrow from the fund balance, that we have to be committed, and it's, you know, it's going to take.
Not borrowing, taking.
Taking, I meant, excuse me, taking.
It's like sometimes borrow, it'll be borrow a band-aid.
You say it borrowed.
So if you were to do that, and, and I had, and I'm an optimist, if you were to do that, I'm hoping that it wasn't three point seven six million dollars.
I don't think it would be either.
I bet it's not going to be zero either.
If we did it, it was just a cap fee.
Oh, there's no.
No more than what.
There's no way to, I mean, I don't want you to take more than one and a half million dollars.
I would think it'd be about two, it's just a feeling, one and a half to two.
I don't, I wouldn't want you to take more than a million and a half, I mean, at this point, because I'm afraid you'll do it again next year.
Well, we got a balance.
But, 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 I mean, if you do that, then are you going, I mean, how are you going to fund infrastructure? Because that doesn't, I mean, doing that does not fund your infrastructure.
No, not at all.
So what are you, what are you going to do?
See, I, I think we, we probably need, I won't jump on, do something this year.
Yeah.
Because it, it's just going to, we're just going to keep putting the band-aid on it and just. And the words of Johnny, we're kicking the can down the road.
Sure, but do you have enough, I'm willing to kick, I'm willing to take responsibility for that can, when I am thoroughly committed in the knowledge that I have, that I'm making the best decision, is it enough? I'm not, and I'm just speaking for me.
Sure.
It is not. Or would you be willing, how many cents are you be willing to raise? And then if we don't forecast, if we don't plan, we don't look at some of the things I think we can take a better look at, is it enough?
We raise, but we still forecast. With these three guys, we can forecast that, because I think they have this knowledge of our city and other cities and state working.
Ron, you.
Okay.
You weren't supposed to do that.
No.
Nathan.
Y'all three.
Oh, oh, oh.
No.
Now you got the three right there, okay, you're willing to take this on, and we'll come back with the answer.
I do feel comfortable with forecasting.
We've got to, we've got to figure it out there.
Yeah, but that's the thing.
We don't know what a long-term thing, I repeat myself, we don't have a spreadsheet that says police cars, patrol, police cars administered at all.
Do you not have a sense of what, where we need to be?
A sense.
I don't know what that is, I don't know what it is.
Actually, we're close to the sheet, we're close to, we were, we were talking yesterday, we had some presentations to you all at the July pre-agenda meeting, or work session meeting on.
I will tell you, you have a hundred vehicles in this city that are over twenty years old.
Yeah.
But then also, he, he also said, we're about nine million, million dollars away from having. Where they need to be.
Probably one, two, and three streets, I mean, it's not, we still got to work.
Yeah. So, I think that there, there are plans to how we, how we do this, we just need to make sure the funding's there.
We just need to see the plan. And, and I, I think we're walking, going that way, but, but, you know, that's, that's what I've been saying, on all these capital items, we need a, not a history, but a forecast.
So we need this by Q, tomorrow?
No, that's fine. Notice, if, if you want, if you want, we can give it to the special call meeting. We can, we can, you know, we can get the can on me. You know, to have it on the agenda, we get, we got to have information tomorrow for the, for the council.
The point is the downside of this year, because of what Martha says, use fund balance as little as we can, and during the year, analyze these problems so we can come back next year and say, here is, this is the history of our taxes, this is the history of what we need as far as we have to do.
Your downside is if sales tax revenue continues to decline, and you're in a desperate situation.
Then how are you going to pay for payment?
Well, we're not right now, until we look at raising that, like, we have nothing for payment.
In the twenty-six million, twenty-six million dollars.
But that's for this, we're spending it right now.
Yeah, we're spending this.
Last contract on Q.
No, no, it'll be probably July or, like, July.
The last.
Will be possible.
That's, that's all of our money.
Yeah, how much, how much of the twenty-six million went to roads and nine?
Yeah.
So you'll have five, about five, six left.
Uh, two.
July.
And we're still, we're still.
You're still nine, you're still nine and six away.
So what, what's the other sixteen million?
Eventually we're going to have to pay for that.
Twenty million, I guess. You can't remember, hey, but you remember.
Okay, that's another.
You're young. You don't have any to say this.
That is another issue that has been in my mind, I'm not comfortable saying we're going to raise taxes, well, I don't know how we're going to pay for stormwater.
I thought.
Yeah.
But I'm, have, have some, I mean, I have some idea how we're going to pay for stormwater, but.
Did we not have this conversation?
I didn't have this conversation.
If we're going to raise one thing, or we're looking at raising, you've just got to be honest to me with the public, and they do, I mean, I would. If you say, Martha, I really need you to give me ten dollars, and I say, well, Frank, I trust you, here's twelve.
Okay. Well. Yeah, but what, I think, I think what you say is, we haven't done this in twenty-three years. You know, and everything has gone up, all across the board. Do you want us to cut police, fire, and EMS, and then when you make a nine-one-one call, you have a, a, a five-minute wait instead of a two-minute wait, or a minute wait?
I think that's, we had this conversation earlier. We deal today with a lot of national rhetoric trickling down. City of Jackson, Madison County, state, we, we don't, we can't prick up, I requested a machine, they have not, they have not given it to me. There is no, if we'd, if we'd invested that a few years ago.
Oh, no.
Um, people ran campaigns against me, now it's worth over a hundred thousand dollars in my, my portfolio, anyway. Yeah. There's no smoking gun in here.
Right.
There's no smoking gun that we are just wasting money away. I mean, if, if someone were to come to me, we have a whole program now with our employees to find the smoking gun. And so, I mean, if there's a smoking gun in here, I. I'm not taking a vacation this year, I didn't go to Greece.
Park your camel outside.
That's what I'm saying, there, there's, there's no smoking gun, there's no kickbacks, there's that national rhetoric that trickles down, the, the dehumanization, that we're all crooks and we're stealing money and, you know, all this stuff. My neighborhood knows, and I apologize to them all the time, I moved in here, y'all were here before me, I'm sorry, but your roads will be the last one in this city to get paid, because I live on them. It's just the way it is. Cooper Ashen didn't get paid till I moved.
Well.
It does my way home.
The new sign at Conger Park, I had people, was that shared because that's the mayor's park? I said, no, somebody ran into that.
A driver hit it, and we had to replace it.
But see, they thought it was, kind of did, and had your name on it. You know, it just, you don't have to do it this year, but eventually, you're going to have to do it.
I agree with that.
You shouldn't do it in an hour and a half.
Well, but, but here's the thing, we've had this, we've all had.
No.
Well, I understand that, but before that, before that, we still had, we knew there was going to be.
The numbers are less, and they were less.
The numbers are less, that's the thing, the numbers are less. When we were elected, wait, when. The numbers are less.
Oh, the operating was more because.
We were elected, we came and took our seat out there, and we knew we had an income problem.
I didn't.
Well, I was told by the person.
Bobby Arnold's been saying for five years.
Yep, and so we've known it from the day we sat up there. Nathan is a lot easier to understand, I agree.
Don't anybody say that, I will punch you down.
It's on camera.
It's on camera, I'm like, I love you, Bobby.
And Brandon just tweeted it.
He stoned me.
But we can't go back to twenty, we can't.
But we've got now time where we can make some good documentation of exactly where we are showing all the good things, like we're spending less than any other city and all this stuff.
And let's.
That's going to be in the budget book.
Yep.
Let's put some faith in this Tyler.
But I can't publish it until we know what the final numbers of the budget are.
Well, I'd like to see what the personnel things look like over the last three years, since we have people in and out and part-time and all.
That, that still doesn't change the facts of today, though.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying, I mean.
That can't be done today.
And then, and then if you're making a decision to cut from personnel, you're telling somebody they're losing their job.
Yeah.
No, no, I didn't say we, we just need the history to see what it is.
No, but I'm just saying, even if you have that, that still doesn't change where we're at today. We still have to make a decision.
It might tell who we did a good job or not.
Well. Right now we haven't been. No matter what we, I think that we've made a lot of progress today, because I think we, we all realize we have an income problem, we're just trying to figure out how to fix it.
So what are we doing? I'm, I'm sorry, because I've got, I'm going to work all day, this is all I'm doing, Martha. But, I mean, and so, you wanna, you wanna take from fund balance to fund the things that are here with the hope that it actually in that day, and you promised me we're not gonna do it again, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what she said.
Okay, and then how are you gonna pay? Question two.
I wanted to look at, how do we look at how many pennies we might need to look at?
I mean, how much of the difference do you wanna split?
That's the thing, seventeen cents covers the three and a half million.
Seven, yeah, that's...
I don't know, is that adequate, are you gonna...
It's not adequate, it just gets us to break even.
I just, me personally, I don't think that's good leadership.
Here we go, that was, you know, I'll, I'll take, we can go back and forth on this. I ran for the big boy's seat, I'll make a presentation, have it to you tomorrow morning.
Okay.
That's the deal.
I said, I ran for the big boy's seat, I'll have a presentation to you tomorrow morning.
That's good, not for me.
That way, all y'all, when you run for your list, you can blame it on me.
You better vote for it while I'm on board for this. I'm just telling you. No, I, I do remember one time he said, no, no, that's the council's place.
No, I says council's job is about a charter to pass, but...
So don't mix up your own pages with your new pages.
Okay. Yes.
Probably the numbers of the recycling. Probably not the recycles on paper and what went up, and make sure that we all, yeah, we, we take it to our recycling center.
I don't think we've done a good enough job yet. I mean, I think we're expecting Scott to make the decision.
Well, that's exactly what you're doing.
That's what we're doing.
Honestly, my vote is to take out of fund balance and, and do this reporting all during the year, do not wait till eleventh month to do it.
We might still do that, but I would like to just see what you gonna say.
Yep.
I'm thinking we need to fix part of that problem this year.
That's why we have a vote.
That's right.
And only one.
I mean, I just don't wanna stall. We cannot be like we were anywhere in here last year. We've got to really talk, we've done better this year of talking through, being honest, and, and just, we're all one vote. But we cannot procrastinate, we cannot, you know, that's the kicking the can down the road to me.
And we say that, but here we are.
Well, I'm firm with what I says, but I wanna hear what our mayor has to say, that I do not...
I think we, we have done a really good job, and you'd be like it to a household. All of our bills come in, we pay. Pay mortgage, we can pay utility, we can pay everything. We feel nothing wasted.
And the AC system, and we've got a lot of things set...
But then again, you wouldn't run a business like that without any, you wouldn't run a nonprofit that way. You'd be very long, you don't vote.
But you also wouldn't make that decision an hour and a half, even though we had those numbers.
Yeah.
No one mentioned this, I didn't know this was on the radar for this year, so I like to look at this.
So I guess, um, my fault, when I provided the numbers, revenues, expenditures, and the, well, Nathan provided this, that was kind of, I didn't know that I had to highlight the discrepancy of here up there.
I'm sorry, and don't, I don't want you taking any...
No, I ran for the big boy's seat, I'll take it all. That's, that's, this was gonna happen in less time anyway.
To be honest, it was obvious from the numbers that we had two weeks ago, or a week ago.
Yeah, it was, it was up.
That there's a revenue hole.
Yeah. Well, we've known that for two years.
That's why we're here. Three years.
That's what I'm saying, so we, we gotta make a decision.
Blessing pearls now, all of a sudden.
Yeah, I mean, ain't no point in doing it now.
I'm not...
I never knew about this.
I didn't know we were...
You're gonna be getting a lot of calls, huh?